All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience and welcome to the Town of Beekman Planning Board this Thursday, July 17th. If you'll take notice, behind me is an exit. Behind you, down the hall, is another, and then to your left is another exit in the event of an emergency. And if you'll all stand, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence for our service personnel, past and present. First item on the agenda is review of the minutes from the May 15, 2025 meeting. Has the board had a chance to review them?
I didn't look at them.
You did? You did, okay.
Notice something?
Yeah, good.
You're good?
Yes, I am.
I'm good, too. So, one abstention, Mr. Poltrak. And a vote to approve the minutes?
So proved, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, three, and one abstention, Peter Poltrak. Okay.
I never read them.
Okay. So, the first item under discussion is the Selka accessory apartment. Also, just for some house cleaning, on the agenda is the Lennar Plum Court Lot 9. They'll not be attending tonight, so we'll be striking that from the agenda, which is the last item under extensions. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Steve Wallen of Wallen Architecture. I'm representing the owners of 39 Indian Pass. Just to quickly recap, the reason for our submission is we're looking to legalize the apartment on the basement level of the existing house. Since our last submission, we've made a number of corrections and changes to the drawings. We're also in receipt of Dan Kohler's updated response letter, which we received on the 16th. I just want to point out just like a couple of items within that letter, because I noticed a lot of the comments have been satisfied, but just a couple of key points. Note number four, we're requesting a waiver to put topography on the survey. We have a current survey, but we're not doing, we're not proposing any exterior work. There's no site work. We don't have to do any septic work, so we're asking or requesting a waiver to have to put topography on the site plan. Note number seven, just talks about a couple of additional information that we have to add to the bulk table, which we'll get on there. Note number eight, this is a reference to the existing greenhouse. We're also requesting that, if that could be kind of like a sidebar conversation, because I've had discussions with the building inspector, and she has some input on that, so, I mean, we're willing to comply with whatever the board wants us to do, but we'd just like to get like the apartment legalized, you know, get through the planning board, and then if we could address that, you know, before we close everything out. There was just like a couple of other miscellaneous comments about like the deed. We'll submit that to the board. Another request that we had was for showing any slopes that are 20% or more. Again, we're not doing anything to the site. We're not, no, absolutely no site improvements. We'll get the proper planning board blocks on all the drawings. We'll provide the letter of consent. And the one, this is item number 17 in Dan's letter. It talks about, there's a gravel parking area, which right now is over one of the property lines. I mean, we can address that, we can move the gravel off the adjacent property. I just wanted to clarify that it is gravel, it's not asphalt. So, I'm assuming that over the years of snow plowing, it probably pushed the gravel over the property line, and then when we had it surveyed, you know, that's where it ended up. And I believe, you know, it was just like a couple miscellaneous like drawing comments, but that's pretty much the bulk of it.
So, the intent for the parking area is to pull it back into compliance?
Correct.
Show it in the drawing?
Yeah. It's not going for a variance for a gravel overspill into the neighbor's property.
Dan, did you want to weigh in?
No, I think he addressed all the things I was mentioning.
So, would you like us to move on with the waivers at this point? Or any other questions from the board members regarding Selka accessory apartments? Dan, Greg?
Yeah, I have just one comment. I think you should direct the applicant just to get a letter from the building department that the property is presently in good standing with code compliance and has all of its certificates of occupancy, certificates of compliance, and no open building permits.
Okay.
And that's it.
I believe we have that, but I will, we'll get a letter from her.
Very good. And the greenhouse, is that a permanent structure, or is it?
We're gonna further look into it.
Yeah. I was curious, do they require, yeah, permits?
And, yeah, that was kind of like a little sidebar.
Yeah.
But...
Just curious.
Yeah. We'll get together with Jessica. Figure out the best way to proceed.
That's fine. Yeah. So, we are being requested two waivers, one the topography, and the second one is the steep slopes 20%.
You were also asked about the greenhouse, to waive that.
Or not to waive it, just to, we could like come back to that.
That's something he's gonna handle with.
Like if we could move forward with it, or like having the public hearing, and then we can...
Yeah, but he wants it separate, you want it separated from this application, right?
Not, yeah, not separated, just if we could focus on just like legalizing this apartment, so it'll just give us between now and the public hearing, if we could just get in touch with the building inspector and just get her comments on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think what'll happen is she'll either say that it qualifies as a structure or not. I mean, the reason it's in my letter is because I read the definition of structure, and it's basically anything affixed to the ground. So, it's, you know, qualifies as a structure, meaning it has to meet with our accessory structure code, because it's not the primary structure on the property, being that it's in front of the primary structure, and there's a few, there's a few things in 155-26 that don't comport. So, it's just a matter of trying to figure out if she, if she classifies it as a structure or not. And if she does, then the, the solution is either they can move it elsewhere on the site and make it compliant, or there's a possibility that they go to the zoning board for a variance, but they can run that concurrently with our continued review of this application. And if it ends up being that they need a variance, it can always be a condition of any approval this board grants on the special use permit for the accessory apartment.
What's the issue location?
One of them's location, one of them's the bulk of it, you know, compared to the size of the house. Those are a few of the things in 155-26 for accessory structures.
Right. So, a motion to waive topography and steep slope.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Dan, discuss the aquifer overlay standards. Is that relevant here?
Yeah, so, the board, there's five criteria in 155-12D that the board is supposed to analyze. So, they've provided some responses to that on the plans.
Okay.
You can either pull up the plans and you can read them, or, you know, Steve, you've got them right on your plan.
Could you read them, Steve?
You wanna just kinda go through those five standards?
Just out of curiosity, does a accessory apartment affect aquifer overlay in any way?
Well, any development can, you know, this, there's five different criteria and has to do with potential contamination of groundwater, so...
Right. Go ahead, Steve.
You want me just to read our responses?
Please.
Sure. So, A says appreciably alter the subsurface flow of groundwater to private water supply wells and existing and potential public water supply wells. And my response was, this project will not alter the subsurface flow of groundwater. We're not making any changes. B, appreciably degrade the quality of groundwater through the introduction of sewage waste, stormwater runoff, liquid chemicals, petroleum products, dissolved metals, and/or other toxic substances. And my response was, this project will not degrade the quality of the groundwater. No additional exterior or site work is proposed for this project. C, appreciably increase the long-term risk of groundwater contamination through the siting, establishment, or expansion of use of which store, transport, or utilize significant quantities of material which is potentially harmful to groundwater quality. My response, this project will not increase the long-term risk of groundwater contamination. The same answer, no exterior site work. D, appreciably increase the long-term risk of groundwater contamination through the introduction of relatively small quantities of hazardous or toxic substances which over a period of time may accumulate in the groundwater. No hazardous or toxic substances will be on-site at any time. E, appreciably increase the risk of groundwater contamination through the removal of soil, sand, stone, or gravel, which provides a protective mantle for groundwater, or which is part of the geological deposits, making up the town's aquifers. Aquifers, sorry. This, my answer, this project will not increase the risk of groundwater contamination since no site work is proposed for this project. And those are the five questions.
Thank you. So, the last item here, Dan, is to, well, you wanted us to grant him sketch?
You can either agree with those standards.
Yeah.
If you feel like that's appropriate.
Do you need a vote for that? Because I agree.
We have been doing a vote on that, yes.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a planning board review of the standards for the aquifer overlay.
Any questions or issues with his assessment from any board member?
I make the motion to accept the assessment that the architect has made regarding the aquifer overlay.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And at this point, would you like us to grant sketch? Is that it? And then set a public hearing?
Not for me, it's for you guys to decide.
Yeah.
I'd like to pose that we accept sketch approval and set a public hearing for August 21st.
August 21st is the meeting in August.
Okay. Need more time, Pete?
No.
No? Anyone else have any comments or questions?
No.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You, too.
Thanks. Okay. Right. Second item on the agenda is Pellegrino Lot Line. Actually, no.
Yeah, there you are. Yeah, big time.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. We're here tonight to provide a bit of an update and get some more determination from the board in our path to getting final subdivision approval for the project located at 209 Cottage Road. We made a submission to the board after the last meeting where we included some additional information on the plans and incorporated some of the comments we received from the board. Just a reminder, we are moving forward with the Cottage Road access based on the decisions. We provided some information related to, we're looking for the board to anon, related to the aquifer overlay zone, which the board will need to address or assess. There was also in Mr. Kohler's comments, question about trees to be removed. At the beginning of the project, we had received a waiver to only show trees on the project within the limits of disturbance, which we have done. We've looked at what trees could be kept within that area, and for various reasons, including grading, or the construction of the septic system, or the driveway itself, it's unlikely that trees within this area would survive. So, we are, we are proposing to remove all the trees within the limit of disturbance. I also want to provide an update on the maintenance agreement. We have begun moving forward with that. An amendment to the maintenance agreement has been drafted. It's been sent to the town attorney and the title company for review. The applicant has begun reaching out to the neighbors to get their signatures and get their, you know, inform them of the change. There's unexpected to be pushback there, since we are just adding them to Cottage Road, but some of the neighbors, the addresses, the names on the original maintenance agreement may not have been updated as time's gone on. The other issue we wanted to mention is, and this has been on the plan, is the steep slopes. These were all items included in Mr. Kohler's column letter. What we're seeking from the board tonight is addressing these, these items, as well as directing staff to draft a resolution for approval that the board may choose to vote on at the next planning agreement.
Okay. Very good. Did you want to go over the aquifer overlay items?
Yes. So, in our response letter, we did include the individual items that are included in the aquifer overlay zone. First one being that the project will not appreciably alter subsurface flow of groundwater. The proposed well and septic systems have been designed in accordance with the Dutchess County Department of Health regulations, and provide the required setbacks for neighboring wells and septics to ensure that there is no impact. The project will not degrade qualitative groundwater through introduction of sewage waste, stormwater runoff, liquid chemicals, petroleum products, dissolved metals, or other toxic substances. We discussed the sewer with the septic system. Stormwater drainage patterns won't significantly change. They still will continue to flow from the north to the south on the property. There is no impact to the wetland on the neighboring property. And the other items are not really applicable. There is no proposed storage of liquid chemicals, petroleum products, or other toxic substances. The project is not proposing to store, transport, or utilize significant quantities of material which are potentially harmful to groundwater, as you know, it's a single-family residence, so there would be no impact there. And the project does not propose significant excavation that may increase the risk of groundwater contamination through removal of soil, sand, stone, or gravel, which provides protective mantle for groundwater, of which part of geological deposits make up the town aquifer. The grading, excuse me, the grading is primarily filled to create the driveway. There is some cut to create the house, but the septic is also mostly follows the natural contours as well. So, there is not significant excavation proposed as part of this project.
Motion to approve or discuss from the board?
No discussion, I would approve the recommendation.
Any comments, questions about aquifer overlay standards?
Nope.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, regarding the steep slopes, Dan, so, do you consider this a significant steep slope?
Well, code does.
That needs discussion, yeah? Maybe, could you explain it? Yeah, I'm interested in hearing.
So, 155-53, which was attached to the letter, you know, goes through the whole standards that are required. So, it's either, you know, and I put it out there as options, you know, which they can consider also. I mean, it's either, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you said wait.
No, that was a cough.
So, the, the concepts could be that, you know, we go through the standards of the approvals for steep slopes disturbance for the driveway as it's laid out right now and graded out right now. And then if the board was to approve those, you know, we need to put that into the resolution and then have them put that into the map notes, so that when the map is filed with the county clerk, and somebody goes to build on this some years from now, that driveway has to be exactly put as that, or they have to come back here for steep slopes for the planning board again.
What is the grade now, 20% or...?
There's, there's three different ranges for the town code. There's a 15 to 25, 25 to 35, 35 and above.
And this is 20?
Although, there's, there's, so there's a minor discrepancy in the code where one of them says 33 and above is the extremely steep. But what the applicant's done, and you can see it on the plat sheet, it was sheet, actually it was C110.
Sheet 1?
C110 has it, the steep slopes ranges. So, they have the hatching for where the different ranges are. So, the lighter gray, if you look up at the legend, it is the 15 to 25, and then...
Let me just skip there. Because we went over this at the FAB, right?
Yeah, they, they were interested in it because have a profile of work for getting a fire truck in.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the, you can see that the driveway crosses some of those steep slopes. So, there's standards that the board has to, to review. And, and the onus is of course on the applicant to prove to us why that's the best, most appropriate, so...
Want to have that? What would you like to do? I think, would you like to review them now?
So, then the other option is, you know, that there's just, the next person, when they come to build on this, has to come before this board to go through the standards of whatever their plot plan shows of any disturbance of steep slopes.
Or do it exactly as it's shown.
Or, exactly. So, last month, we talked about how we were discussing potentials for the restrictions and whatnot of having to come back, and, you know, that, that was for a different issue.
Yeah.
Right? But, so it's...
What is the...
Partially on them, it's partially on us, so...
Okay. So, I guess I'll ask you what the grade is, and would you like to review the standards now, present them to us?
So, yes, the, as Mr. Kohler was saying, we are disturbing slopes in the 15 to 25% range, as well as some in the 25 to 35% range, although it's a small area. And, you know, this, the plans were developed to kind of understanding that this was part of the code, and we have minimized the disturbance of these slopes to the greatest extent possible. You know, that, we have, the location of the driveway is all the way on the far western side of the property, where those slopes are, not in that extreme range.
Yeah.
So, we'd be, I think the discussion for tonight, we would be looking to have this determined tonight. If it's, I don't think there'd be an objection to this being something where that if somebody went to develop this property in future, they would have to come back to this board. I think that's understood, and I think that that would, at that time, you know, if there was a desired change to the driveway location, they could propose that to you, and then, you know, that might, that might, I don't see how it would reduce the impact of steep slopes, since as I said, we located it at the least intrusive part, but...
Just bear with me. So, because you have a couple of choices. The one is to build as is and review the standards with us tonight, right, Dan? Or have the future owner of this parcel come back before us.
Yes.
Did I say that right, Dan? Yeah.
I'd say so, yeah.
Yeah, and...
So, why don't you just, yeah?
Yeah, I think we're looking to...
You need a minute to think about it?
No, no, I will...
Oh.
I mean, we can do it tonight, we can discuss it. I think we, I think we're prepared to discuss it tonight, yeah.
Yeah? Okay. I bet it.
Okay. So, it's sort of the items I've discussed already, the...
Do you have the standards there?
I do, yes.
Oh, okay. So, why don't you start with the first standard?
Yeah. So, disturbance of trees, forests, and steep slopes shall be in performance with all of the applicable town regulations pertaining to trees. So, as we discussed, we are showing the trees that are being proposed to be removed here within the limits of disturbance, and as I said, we limited to the ones that would be impacted. So, we, that's what the items we discussed earlier tonight. The planning and development of the building design shall provide maximum structural safety and human enjoyment while adapting the building site.
Bear with me just one minute. So, I just want to, now, this tree legend here that you have provided, okay, so there isn't a table, but there is, these are your existing trees?
Those are the existing trees, yes, within the limits of disturbance.
Yeah, and you put the size on them.
Great. Okay.
And where they knew what the species was, they put the size and the species, or just the size and...
Well done. Yeah. So, okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, the second one was...
The second item is, planning and design and development of building design shall provide the maximum structural safety and human enjoyment while adapting the building site to taking advantage of the best value of natural terrain. The building itself is not in any steep slope, so we're really just talking of driveway.
Right.
So, it doesn't really apply. The next one is similar, padding and terracing of building sites, including that in the limit to, mounting of septic tile fields shall be minimized.
Now, just to go back to the second one, could you read that a little slower and louder into the microphone?
The planning, design, and development of building design shall provide the maximum in structural safety and human enjoyment while adapting the building site to and taking advantage of the best use of the natural terrain.
Okay. So, Dan, does that have anything to do, safety and the...
Well, where the structure is proposed isn't within the steep slope section. The only parts of the steep slopes are where the driveway comes through.
Right. So, we're not worried about the, the fire truck when speaking about safety and that sort of thing? That item doesn't apply there, does it?
Well, I mean, you know, I think we've beaten that horse to death by now.
Okay. And we'll leave it alone then, right? We're not culpable in any way. Well, if lightning struck...
The fire advisory board said that they would fight the fire from Cottage Road, probably.
Okay. There's that, I'm sorry, okay. And number three?
This also relates to the building itself. The padding or terracing of building sites, including but not limited to the mounting of septic tile fields, shall be minimized. We're not proposing any of that. Roads and driveways shall follow natural topography and minimize regrading and comply with the design standard for the maximum grade of subdivision road construction, road specifications, and zoning code, off-street parking, loading, and driveway standards. The plans have been developed to meet that. The, as I mentioned earlier, the grading has been minimized, and the impact of steep slopes have been minimized. The driveway comes straight in as needed to access Cottage Road, but then does bend and start to follow the natural topography, making that S shape. The natural elevations and vegetative cover of ridge lines shall be disturbed only if the crest of the ridge and tree line at the ridge remains uninterrupted, either by positioning buildings into areas of disturbance below the ridge line, or by positioning buildings in areas of disturbance at the ridge line, so that the roof line of building is seen as a continuation of the natural tree line with the existing trees serving as a backdrop to the structure. However, under no circumstances shall more than 100 feet along the ridge line to a width of 100 feet generally centered on the ridge line be disturbed. It doesn't apply to this project. The only, the building, as we mentioned, is not on the steep slopes, it's not on the ridge line, it's in the center of the site, where it's having a natural continuous grade from north to south. Any regrading, excuse me, any regrading shall blend in with the natural contours and undulations of the land. The grading is proposed to do that. Cuts and fills shall be rounded off to eliminate sharp angles at the top and bottom sides of regraded slopes. Visible construction cuts and permanent scarring shall be minimized. We've done this to the greatest extent possible. However, as mentioned, we're coming straight in against the contours there to create that initial access point, so we have minimized that to the greatest extent possible. The angle of cut and fill slopes shall not exceed the natural angle of repose of the soil or rock materials in the cut or fill, except where retaining walls, structural stabilizers... stabilization, or other methods acceptable to the town engineer are used. Generally for soils, cut and fill slopes shall be no steeper than two horizontal to one vertical. We have done less than that. In this case, we've done three-on-one as our maximum slope, so we are not, we're compliant with that one. Fill slopes shall be located, oh, excuse me, fill slopes shall not be located on natural slopes of two horizons to one vertical, 50% slope or steeper, or where the fill slope bottoms out within 12 feet horizontally of the top of an existing or proposed cut slope. The existing slopes do not exceed two-on-one, and we are not within 12 feet horizontally of the top of an existing proposed cut slope. The tops and bottoms of cut and fill slopes shall be set back from existing and proposed property boundaries at a distance of three feet plus one-fifth the height of the cut or fill, but not exceed a horizontal distance of 10 feet. We have analyzed that and provided that along specifically the western property line. Tops and bottoms of cut and fill slopes shall be set back from structures at a distance that will ensure the safety of the structure in the event of collapse of the cut or fill slopes. Generally, such distance shall be considered to be six feet plus one-half the height of the cut or fill slope, but need not exceed 10 feet. Nevertheless, a structure built on a slope or at the top of a slope is permitted if it is properly designed by a New York State licensed professional engineer to retain the slope and withstand the forces exerted on it by the retained slope. Again, the house is set back far enough from that fill slope.
And below the ridge.
Disturbance of rock outcrops shall be by means of explosives only if labor machines are not effective, and only if rock blasting, including safety, security, and protection procedures, is conducted under the supervision of a New York State licensed blaster and in compliance with the following or current acceptable practices: United States Army Corps of Engineers Safety Manual EM 385-1-1, Code of Federal Regulations AFT Title 27, Institute of Makers of Explosives Safety Library Publication Number 22, New York State Code of Rules and Regulations Title 12, Part 39. There are no rock outcrops in the property.
And no blasting.
Yep. Disturbance of steep slopes shall be undertaken in workable units in which disturbance can be completed within one construction season, so that the areas are not left bare and exposed during the winter and spring thaw periods. There is not excessive fill proposed in the steep slopes, so it should be manageable to do this within one season. Disturbance of existing vegetative ground cover shall not take place more than 15 days prior to grading and construction. This is something that we can include as a note on the plan, but that is something that would not be proposed. Temporary soil stabilization must be applied to an area of disturbance within two days of establishing the final grade and permanent stabilization in 15 days. Again, that is a typical requirement for soil stabilization. In fact, I think New York State might feel a little more stricter than that. Soil stabilization must be applied within two days of disturbance if the final grade is not expected to be established within 60 days. Again, that is very typical, and New York State's Blue Book has more stringent regulations. Measures for control of erosion and sedimentation shall be undertaken consistent with the New York State standards and specifications for erosions and sediment control as amended. The project does comply with that. We do have erosion and sediment control practices proposed on the plan. All proposed disturbances of steep slopes shall be undertaken consistent with the soils, the limitations, ratings contained in the Dutchess County Soil Survey, as prepared by the Dutchess County Soil and Water Conservation District. In terms of recognition of limitations of soils on steep slopes, to development and application of all mitigating measures as necessary by the approval authority, we are showing the soil boundaries on the plan, and there are no E or F soils, which are typically the ones that are the more restrictive soil types, so we are not expecting to be any issues with that. Topsoil shall be stripped from all areas of disturbance stockpiled in a manner to minimize erosion and sedimentation and replaced wherever needed on the site at the time of final grading. Again, that is something we'll be including as a note. Replanting shall consist of indigenous vegetation and shall replicate the original vegetation on the site as much as possible. Again, we haven't prepared a landscape plan for this, that would be probably up to whoever chooses to develop this lot. But again, that is another note we can include on this plan to address that directly. No organic material or rock with sufficient diameter to not allow appropriate compaction or cover by topsoil shall be used as fill material, same as the above, that would be a condition of construction. Compaction of fill materials in fill areas shall be such as to ensure support of proposed structures and stabilization for intended uses. Again, that's a means and methods of construction, a note we can include on the plan as well. Sanitary sewage disposal system shall be prohibited on extremely steep slopes and very steep slopes. The proposed and approved septic system is not located on any steep slopes. And those are the items.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any comments from any of the board members regarding the steep slopes?
I think you were mentioning about putting some notes on the plans to address some of these things.
Yeah, I think we were, we didn't have time to put it together in the next mission, but many of these are already on our plan that we're going to be submitting for the next submission, and we can include the rest of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for, you know, M-N-O-R-S-T-U. I think you had mentioned just about all those, about having notes on there for those. Those are all important to have some notation on the map, just to further enhance it for the guy who actually goes in there and constructs this later, who doesn't know what you guys are going through at the planning board level.
Yeah.
So, and I think there's an opportunity to save some of the trees in between the driveway and the house. As the driveway loops around, there's not a lot of grading, there's actually no grading shown in some of those areas, but the one map shows a whole bunch of trees in there. I'm wondering if there's a way to save some of those trees to help hold the slopes in between at the bottom.
This is on the...
So as the driveway comes down and then loops back in between the two?
That's where the proposed well is.
Yeah.
So, we would have to clear an area just to drill the well and then have the line, so our expectation is that just by doing that work, you'd be destroying some of the root systems of those trees, and that they might not survive, so it's why we just propose to have them removed.
Yeah, I mean, this board is historically deals, you know, in terms of trees, we're trying to save some. And there's a couple of 36-inch trees too, that are shown on here, that if there's a way to, and there's two 36-inch trees that are right at the limit of disturbance, that if you can figure out ways to try to save some of those trees, I think it would be helpful, because the trees provide roots that are also stabilizing the whole soil in the area. So, if we're looking at steep slopes disturbances, we want to try to maintain trees to, in as much as possible, to maintain some of the stability of those slopes.
Understood. We can include those trees to be protected, however, I think we might want to consider measures if those trees do not survive the initial regrading. Trees of that age don't usually do well when you start regrading around their roots. So perhaps, is there maybe a, if, you know, they don't survive a replanting schedule, you know, maybe caliper size that the board usually requests?
Well, so, under the forestry law, I don't know if you've looked at that yet, but around the fifth or sixth page, you'll see section number nine at the bottom, there's a paragraph there regarding tree removal for subdivisions, and this is a subdivision. So, you're supposed to consider preserving trees, not consider, but preserve trees within 60 feet of the principal structure, and then 10 feet of everything else, whether it be a catch basin or driveway, or whatever the case may be.
But I don't think preserve it.
Yeah.
That area can be cleared within 60 feet of the house and 10 feet of other structures.
And we are, just to be clear, we are not proposing to exceed those limits, well within them in general.
So maybe you can tweak the location of the driveway to preserve the tree, particularly the 36-inch, but if not, then mitigation would be necessary. And what I was going to recommend, Dan, I don't know if they're not coming back before us, being that they're going, they already went over the steep slope laws there, that the building inspector would be involved in landscape and mitigation of trees, that sort of thing, in the future. Is that possible?
I don't believe that that's in our code.
No.
Yeah.
If I may, when they go to cut these trees, I imagine they'll require a tree removal permit from the town. Would that come before this board? Would that be the building inspector?
No, that's probably just part of the regular building permit.
I mean, if, he has to have a driveway to get to his house, so if there's a tree in the way, it needs to come down, right? And then, the landscaping would be a part of whatever the homeowner chose to do.
Yeah, but we want to do something to prevent what happened down there on Greenhaven Road.
That's apples and oranges, you know. That was, that has nothing to do with this project.
Well, it does, because you're talking about removal of the trees, and whether somebody comes in and does is overzealous.
Well, yeah, well, that would be a problem. So, if, according to the plans, they deviated from what is here, then there would be code enforcement issues, stop orders and violations and such, right? But that's a supposing, a what-if.
No, it's one of the things that actually this board needs to address, so it doesn't happen. And two meetings ago, that is something that was brought up, is what can we do to prevent something, a recurrence of what happened on Greenhaven Road? So anytime that you're having tree removal, you have the potential for the same occurrence that happened on Greenhaven Road. So, we need to somehow set some sort of a standard and apply it to the plat, so that, so that there is a control. Whether it's having the building inspector onsite and approve things, I don't know, but there's got to be...
Well, perhaps the solution is surveying the limits of disturbance and, you know, putting a construction fence around that, and no trees outside of that construction fence can be removed, and that is up to the building inspector to watch. That's a condition you can impose. That seems reasonable. And if there's any trees within that area that the board thinks can be reasonably saved, you know, then you can have them identify that and put tree protection rings around them before any site disturbance, you know, as part of your preliminary erosion control measures. Something that you can do.
Now, one of the questions that Pete asked was, will this restrict the builder in any way? Meaning, if you want to, I don't want to speak for you. You were talking about if you wanted to change the location of the house, the septic fields.
They want to change the location of the house, or whatever.
And I explained to him that, you know, there is some movement permissible, this is site plan approval. It's, nothing is exact until construction begins, correct? Until the final plans are submitted to the town, and the building permit is pulled, and all of that good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's portions of driveway that couldn't be moved without coming back to you, you know, as a result of the steep slopes, you know, that's the only, that's the only control.
So right now, we're approving...
The septic has to basically be where it is, that's approved there. The well was approved in a certain location by the health department before us, so...
But, okay.
So basically...
But if I could look at the law...
Yeah.
And wanted to put the house in a different location.
Yeah.
The onus is on, before I can build, the onus is on me to get approval from the health department.
If you were removing the septic.
For the septic.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
If the septic still is, and you can still, you know, relocate the house within the building envelope.
I just have the feeling that we're approving a set of plans that is inflexible.
This is for a subdivision only, and this is sketch approval, and if there were any major deviations from this, then the applicant would have to come back before us. Is that correct?
It's something that you can have put on the plans and put in the resolution.
If they wanted to move the driveway to the other road, right?
Yeah.
I mean, those are the sort of things that would affect this right now. What specifically are you concerned about?
They'd have to come back.
Yeah, right. Because this is the purpose of this site plan approval right now.
The resolution would have to keep the tree mitigation plan and the removal plan.
So, yeah, if you'd like, if you'd like the resolution to read that we use the orange fencing for the areas of disturbance, and stay within the limits of our tree removal laws, they can mark the trees accordingly and put the fencing where it belongs, and then code enforcement can inspect and make sure that nothing is moved outside of that.
Well, doesn't the board feel that that was something that we should be doing?
Yes.
Yes. I think it's a good idea.
You know, it's something that we should, so we should make, so we should make that a part of not only this, but any other.
Sure. I mean, Semana Estates...
That should come before us.
Semana Estates was our very first application of Clifford Schwartz's tree removal law. We've never had that law applied before in any way, shape, or form. You know, entire football fields of trees were removed prior to his law, so this is a good thing. And, but we'll get to the Semana Estates further down the line.
Well, I think that, as you said, the fencing and stuff has to be incorporated in the approval.
It makes sense. Especially something like this, and it gives something for the code enforcement officer to work off of.
So I would just like to clarify it for myself. For the purpose of this application, you know, since they are not proposing to build anything, you're requesting we just add a note to the plan indicating that...
In the resolution for the future buyer.
Understood.
And on the plan.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And on the plan.
So will you take a look and see if there's any trees that you think you can save in there? Because...
We will.
I mean, I know there are. Let's put it that way.
Okay, we will look at specific trees. I will say, the location of the driveway, you know, if we shift it one way or the other, we're saving some trees, we're pushing into others possibly, so I don't know that the driveway relocation would save too many trees. I think within the existing limits of disturbance, there may be some trees we can identify as being protected.
Have you staked out the central line?
No, because, as I mentioned, there is no, they're not proposing to build this. This is just for a subdivision approval, prior to them doing a plot plan for development. That is something they would do.
So all we're doing now is considering preliminary subdivision approval, so... Anything else, Dan?
No.
Greg?
Nothing.
No? Any other board members?
Nope.
So... So we can consider granting preliminary subdivision approval at this point and authorize the town consultants to prepare a resolution of conditional final approval for future consideration.
I will make a motion to grant preliminary subdivision approval and authorizing the town consultants to prepare a resolution of conditional final approval for future consideration.
I'll second your thing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
So, on this, you're going to ask the building inspector to keep an eye on it.
Yes.
Now, is there a means to provide for the building inspector's salary or...
Yeah, we'll come out of escrow.
Yeah, we'll come out of escrow.
Okay, but they have to put an escrow.
Yes.
Just to take it one step further, what I would do is, when you really have a larger subdivision, like Samantha, yeah, well, I'm thinking we would hire, you know, somebody like you or, or say Claude.
Why don't, but anyway.
Well, they would hire somebody like you or Claude to be a part of the project that would come out of escrow. So...
Maybe it should be specified as for the...
Yeah.
Okay. Just trying to look down the road.
Good evening. Hi.
Good evening. As a result of our last meeting and our most recent submission, there was considerable discussion regarding no further subdivision on the proposed subdivision. I think the, what was given to us by the board, I think we have memorialized that on the plan. There is a note now on sheet one on the subdivision plat that there's no further subdivision of, of lot number one. And we have presented that to you for, for review, for review. And I think Victoria has talked with the town attorney as well.
Right. So at the last meeting, you guys were gracious enough to allow us to talk about the language. We figured it out. It's now on the plans. And as you know, map notes are enforceable. So the fact that it's on the plan means that it can't be further subdivided. Plus boots and suspenders, once this proceeds to preliminary, we will be drafting a formal agreement that the, your attorney will have to approve, just confirming the no further subdivision restriction. That will be recorded with the Dutchess County Clerk once the plat is finalized.
Greg, was there anything you wanted to say? I'm sorry. Was there anything you wanted to add?
Just that when lot number one is sold, it will be a deed restriction as well. There's, there's going to be a lot of checks and balances that make sure that the intent is followed and there's no further development.
Then we had a conversation about movement of lots in the event of a pool or whatever amongst the other cluster. Has that worked in?
We're not proposing that at this time. The language doesn't restrict it amongst the smaller residential lots.
The neighbors, right.
The restriction is really on the bigger lot.
The bigger lot.
Yeah.
And that would be up to the neighbors if they wanted to do between themselves.
They would work that out amongst themselves, yeah.
It's hypothetical in the future.
Right, right. And doable.
Yeah. Any other questions or issues amongst any of the board members?
No.
No, I don't remember.
Dan, this isn't really something that I need to read or discuss right now, right? Their resolution, their proposed resolution?
No, we, we always compile everything into a final resolution. So...
So they're looking for preliminary?
Yeah, they're looking for preliminary. You have to do a secret determination first. It's unlisted action. It's coordinated review of an unlisted action.
It's a negative.
We filled out part two and part three for the board to consider.
Yep.
All the impact early note or small impact may occur in part two. And in part three, we talked about some of the things that the applicant did to further reduce potential environmental impacts, including self-restrictions, dealing with clearing for Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, constructing sewage disposal systems in accordance with state and county regulations. The applicants worked with the highway superintendent to mitigate traffic impacts associated with the proposed driveway cuts. They've proposed no disturbance to wetlands or associated D E C adjacent areas or town buffer along the intermittent water course. As we just talked about, they imposed a restriction to further subdivide lot one. And based on that, it's up to this board to make a determination of if there's an environmental impact and that needs to be further analyzed, or if they're, if the board wants to issue a negative declaration, ending the secret process.
I'll make a motion to declare a negative declaration determining that the project will not result in a significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required.
Any discussion of a motion? May I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, so the next item on the agenda, the next item is to consider, Dan, do you want to explain that to me?
Preliminary subdivision approval.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand this.
I don't have my glasses on. Can't see.
I don't know why that's there.
Maybe that was an error.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Comment.
That was the old, that was the April letter.
Oh, okay.
That was just included to catch you up on the last.
All right.
Yeah.
So what do we need to do?
Consider preliminary subdivision approval, so they can go out to health department and get those outside approvals.
Make a recommendation for preliminary site approval?
The second?
So subdivision, I'm sorry.
Subdivision approval?
Go ahead, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Very good.
Basically, just for the applicant's benefit, work on outside agency approvals, health department particularly, address the items in the April review letter, advance plans to include items that are contained in 130-25. That's our final plat requirements. And work on some of those items that you'd noted in your draft resolution of preliminary approval. And there was also some discussion about, I think you guys were proposing, what, three trees?
We were proposing three trees.
Yeah.
Lots of, five and four.
Discuss the tree mitigation?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was, that was one of them.
So one of the items that we just want you to look at carefully is, is to address the view shed on beach. Our code is every seventy, what is it?
Every seventy-five.
Every seventy-five feet.
Two per lot.
Two per lot. So for the board to weigh in on this, that cluster of trees over on that side, that cluster of homes over on beach, that is going to be there, we may want to discuss with the applicant his, his consideration of putting some indigenous trees over there that don't exist. And street trees, you know, I'm not picturing a row. I prefer more of a, a natural look. That's my opinion. Board can weigh in and...
Be on the beach.
Protecting the view shed of those neighbors on that, that side of the road.
So just timing wise, are you looking to have those planted now?
Oh, well.
I mean, what's the...
I'm not imposing a time specifically when it, when it's appropriate for trees to be planted. Yeah.
Prior to signing the plat, perhaps?
Yeah, I mean, it will, you know, so it fits into your construction timeline also appropriately, yeah.
Wouldn't want to do it after construction?
That would be...
It depends if they're going to put them near construction.
Well, I mean, these lots are sold to individual. If they're sold individually, we lose control of how that works.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, well, you know, that, that's something that we ran into, and I wouldn't want to, yeah, I mean, if we, that's a very good point, Victoria, because, can you remind me of that lovely stone ridge?
Yeah.
Dan, could you go through the whole thing? I want you to start fifteen years ago and then come through till now, at least, including the tram and the street trees. Because I can't remember what happened specifically. If you could just review it.
No, I don't want this meeting to last forever.
No?
Well, I think the point is, do we have, do you want these trees to be part of the subdivision approval or until they're built on?
I would do the built on. No, what do you say? You're more experienced.
I say the subdivision approval, because then we know what's going to happen. You could have three lots that aren't built on for twenty years.
It's got to be subdivision approval.
I've got, I've got a lot that I've owned since sixty-four.
So then they won't, yeah, they'll be, they'll be large enough.
Yeah.
But then we'd have to put something in the resolution that...
Right, yeah. No, I think you identify what trees you would plant.
So they wouldn't cut them down or anything.
Right.
Okay.
Dan, what were these other inconsistencies between the plan and the plat?
It's just that there was, there was a couple of lots that the layouts didn't exactly match. There's a separate surveyor associated with the project, so they might not just coordinate the plans. They, they know what they got to do. They just got to put them together.
So what do you think? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
So rather than, if my understanding of the board, rather than at the plot plan review process before building permit, you will want those done before the map is signed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We had shown, I'll get my map. I thought we showed one tree on each lot. Is that what you're looking for? On Beach Road?
I'll pull it up here, too.
And then we were protecting these in the, in the resolution.
Right.
And on the plans.
You'd want to cite them not near the proposed driveways and all that, so that, and obviously not within the site lines and things like that.
Was this reasoning April sixteen, comment?
I don't know if it was or not.
Should be added to that, so the applicant...
We can take a look and propose for the final, a location where the, you have them here, proposed red maple, proposed, I mean, he, he has them on his map.
Yeah, I have one, one proposed tree on lot six, five, and four.
In locations where there's not already trees or a driveway.
I think the point that was discussed was every seventy-five feet.
Okay. But there's already, there's already some existing trees there.
Right.
So that's that part of it.
Yeah, so you got the conifer grove there. It's between lot three and four.
Bless you.
And then you've got open area, generally, you know, half of four, maybe less than half of four, then five and six.
So how many would you say?
Some on seven, which is on hines.
Well, they could just give us what they propose, and we can either agree with it or not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to them to propose, yeah.
Yeah. Some sycamores, cedars.
Cedars take over.
Apple trees, and they can go by and steal one every now and then.
Apple trees are very big men.
Yes.
I think there's a couple of apple trees coming out as a result of this, right? But I don't think they're in good shape, right?
There's a few in there.
Yes, yeah, some other, yeah.
Blueberry bushes.
I'm having the same problem, getting older, too. Does that work?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with something. I mean, we have something now, but it looks like we're going to have to amplify it.
Okay.
Right.
Sounds great. So what should we do?
I think we're done.
We'll come back when we have a updated plan.
Okay, all right.
I suspect our next plan will have not only the trees, but it'll be in final form.
Right.
Thank you.
I think we're that close.
That's what would be good.
It looks great. I mean, everything looks really nice.
I heard tonight in one of the previous applications that you, you authorize professionals to do a resolution of final. Is that, like, if we were to come back next month, August, and have what we think is a final plan, can one get final that night, subject to, or do you have to draft a resolution, come back the following month?
Normally, the procedure is, is that you come back in for final and then it's authorized. But in certain cases, when there's not a lot of comments left, we could do that.
Okay. So if our plan was relatively complete, that could happen next month.
Put a draft together, yeah, with the essential trees.
I think we, I think we might have two weeks before.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to have a situation where you're dealing with, you know, the health department doing well tests and whatever else, and then we're waiting and waiting and waiting and extending, so...
Do you get, will you approve the final plan, commission department has?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have. Yeah. Obviously, some good progress with them first would be helpful. And, and our code requires that correspondence with outside agencies be provided, just so that we can keep track of what's going on. Just feel free to copy the planning department on that.
Okay. Our client, thank you.
Thank you.
For your action.
Thank you.
And I think you'll be, you'll sleep well tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, Victoria. Have a good night. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, Claude Meadows, subdivision?
So the engineer reached out to me and has a conflict. He's at another town tonight.
Okay.
But they weren't able to, because in June, we had our meeting at the Fourth Thursday as opposed to the Third, they ran out of time to do the legal ad and the certified in terms of the minimum amount of days prior to the meeting. So they've asked if we could change the public hearing date that they wanted, which would have been tonight, to, to the August meeting, August 21st.
Can I have a motion? Public hearing to August 21st. Okay. Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Samantha States.
How are you?
Hi, Amy.
Amy Pateen, project planner with...
Yep.
We were last in the board last month. We discussed the tree mitigation plan and we considered comments. We've got your...
Hold on one second.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So we were here last month in front of the board just to discuss the tree mitigation plan. There were comments made, and we've taken the comments under advisement. I know we were specifically asked to provide renderings from particular views, and we did have somebody go out to the site to take photos for us to achieve those. And we were met with a wall of trees and understory, and we just didn't think that it would be feasible from what was being asked. We understood what we were trying to achieve was to show what the plantings would look like proposed when they were installed and also, you know, later on when they're at the church. So what we did do was we went and had our drone... We understood what we were trying to achieve was to show what the plantings would look like, proposed when they were installed, and also, you know, later on when they're at maturity. So what we did do was, we went and had our drone photographer go out and do an orthomosaic from like top down, and we stitched together photos so that we could overlay our plan on these photos, so that we could get an accurate representation of what is currently existing. We had them go out, I believe it was Fourth of July weekend, or it might have been the weekend after. So these are what it currently looks like today on site. And I will turn it over to Chris, who will walk us through the mitigation plan.
Good evening. Chris Hoff with the LRC Group. So, as Amy said, in lieu of perspective sketches, which is what we would have done, you know, from an eye level, not being able to do that, what we were able to do is get a really good sense of the current conditions from a tree canopy standpoint, where previously we had the stump removal, and that told us what happened on the ground, but now we can really see what's happening from the air. So, and you can see some of the areas. This was intended to be preserved tree line. This was intended to be preserved. That's where it was cleared, a couple of other little spots. But what was... What we were happy to see when we saw this for the first time is that it's not as... It doesn't look as clear-cut as it looks from the street view. There's a lot more canopy there.
From the ground.
From... Right, from the ground, and if you're looking at the site standing there. So this is the approved plan overlay. The green areas are where we would have had to remove trees and graded for septic, for drainage, for all of the site work that needed to be done. So this is basically... And the other element of this is this shows at an install size the proposed plants along the edge, along the property line over there. So this was the original planting plan and the original site plan that was approved. What we took from that, in red, is the areas that were... This is the amount of canopy that was taken, that was taken down. So this is now, you know, bare space from space, you know, from the sky down. And again, if you look at the balance between the two, the red was still intended to be tree canopy. The green is still what was gonna be and what still would be cleared area for the site work to be done. And what we take from that, and what we've done with that, is we... In thinking about how much just seeded lawn was to be here, or seeded for stabilization, whether or not it would be maintained as lawn over time, we went in the direction of incorporating some meadow-type grasses along the edges and in the retention basin, in the stormwater retention areas. So if you look at the two of these together, you can see now that we're proposing much less lawn that's intended to be mowed, which is more in tune with trying to minimize the impact and what's maintained over time as lawn area, while letting this meadow area initially in the surface, that would be a special seed mix that would have wildflowers and pollinator plants in it that would start to stabilize and come up initially. And all of our mitigation plantings would still be within that area. So these are shown as, again, as install, and you probably take a closer look at this, but these are, seem to be fairly sporadic at install, but we would have all this underlying meadow and grassy area that's coming in, which could be maintained, would probably need to be maintained, to be cut maybe once a year, but it doesn't need to be lawn or would not be intended to be lawn. And what we take from this and the end result is that at a 25-year growth, we would still have lawn, like from each homeowner. The yellow shading is all of the proposed mitigation plantings with their actual canopy at a 25-year rate. There's still meadow mixed in throughout. There would be enough sunlight to get through, that there could still be some of that meadowish and, you know, pollinator-friendly plants on the ground plane. And in addition, and I should have pointed out first, that this magenta color is the same 25-year growth of the original approved landscape plan. So this was what we originally had shown in the... All the yellow spots are what we're proposing for mitigation. And I think that, you know, what's nice about this, if you take this in succession, is that this really tells a story a lot better in plan view, to graphically represent what each one of the plants is intended to be, you know, and we touched on it last time, is that some of the, you know, these bigger circles are bigger type trees, and some of the smaller ones are enassing, so that they create an overall mass, so you don't see them as individual once they grow together.
So those oranges represent trees that you're planting in addition to the meadows?
Yes. So, you know, the day that it gets seeded, let's say, the day that it's intended to be stabilized, it's seeded, that grass comes up. Around that same time, depending on construction sequence, some of these mitigation plants could go in. So now you have a natural meadow kind of growing up with a tree, a tree or a shrub mixed in with it. So over time, the trees will, you know, get taller and bigger, and the meadow will probably become less and less as it gets shaded.
So what was, if you don't mind me asking, because I know Rob's not here and I don't wanna speak for Rob, but the question came about of the number of trees that were removed, because it was an inch for inch. And I don't wanna misinterpret here, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Are we replacing mitigated inches with grass, grasses, and plants and flowers?
No. No, that's not the intention. This is just another step in a naturalistic direction to go in, so that it also helps in trying to make sure that, you know, these plants are preserved. What we don't wanna have is a homeowner coming in and then cutting lawn around all these newly planted trees and potentially disturbing them, and we have no control over that. So this aids in trying to keep it a little more natural, trying to keep people away from it while it's getting established. It's still the same number of trees that we're proposing per caliber. We're just adding the grasses as sort of an extra benefit.
So that's my... Part of my question. Can we put the other slide back up? Yes, please. So the last time, it was the question was the number of trees that we were asking to mitigate the number of new plantings versus the removed inches, if you will, or the established trees that were removed. So what am we looking at right there? You see, I see from a distance, others can't, but I'm seeing a couple of dots for trees.
So Ken.
Right.
If I may, Ken, right?
Chris.
Oh, the other kid. You're...
Chris.
Chris, sorry, my apologies.
It's okay.
So if you'll start with the number, what was it? When we did the multiplication on the caliber, caliber, what was it? How many thousands of...
Oh, that, I have... Hold on.
Yeah.
Amy has all the numbers written down.
Sorry, yeah. So if you'll just start with how that's...
How many more trees did we add?
That's not possible.
How many more trees did we add as opposed to the previous plan? Let's start there.
Amy has numbers.
Okay, do you want the caliper inches?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go down the line with what you originally proposed, then what was lost, the caliber per caliber number that Rob spoke about, which was just a negotiating point. It wasn't something that he expected. And Rob and I have spoken about this while he's on vacation, so that he is being represented through me. And then the mitigation plan that you originally proposed and this. Just give us the numbers. You don't have to be perfect.
Okay, so for tree removal, originally, we proposed to remove 205 trees. That 205 trees added up to 2,128 calibrations. What was accidentally...
So if you could just stop there and explain how that's problematic.
The quantity?
Yeah, so if... So the public knows and the board members know.
So if... So generally, if we were gonna try to do an exact caliber to caliber within reasonable ability to purchase these plants in commerce, you're still looking at, you know, the best you can do probably is a three and a half to four-inch caliber tree. If you start to get up to six-inch caliber, they get rare and very, very expensive and less likely to survive. If we did a caliber to caliber at a reasonable rate, we would have to overplant the site, because there's not enough room to put that much caliper in the space that we have to plant outside of what the site plan, you know, the approved site plan. So we'd almost be reforested and planting so close together that they're not really gonna do well, you know, because we're trying to jam a whole lot of caliper into a small space where it normally wouldn't be that close together in that small of a space, if that makes sense. And that, you know, the caliber of what came down was, you know, a 12-inch, and then 15 feet away was another 12-inch. With the area that we had, we would have to be putting them five or six feet apart, and they would never achieve that same level of growth again, because they'd be choking each other out as they got bigger. So it's not really possible to do a caliber to caliber, which is one of the reasons that we proposed, instead of just doing tall trees, we tried to do some understory, which there is almost none there now. And then, you know, and that also goes along with the idea that when you cut a line in a forest area like this, you have what remains is a tree that doesn't have a lot of low branches on it. It has a lot of high branches on it. So we were trying to incorporate some of that lower stuff that makes sense, that it only gets up to be a maturity 30 feet tall, so it fills in that mid-space that's never gonna fill in on its own if we just left it alone. We also incorporated a lot of multi-stem trees, which are difficult to measure caliber to caliber, because they're not in commerce that way. They're in commerce by height. So multi-stem shad blow, for instance, we used. We would call for a six to seven-foot tree. It has three or four stems on it, but they don't measure the caliber in that way. We could guess, but it's just not measured that way in commerce. So it's kind of a multi, you know, we're not trying to short the caliber, but we're trying to give a very good alternative, knowing that we can't just do caliber to caliber in this circumstance.
And myself, I love the idea of bringing meadows into the mix, because this area, you know, going back 40 or 50 years ago, it was agricultural. It didn't start to develop until the 60s or 70s. And there's a lot of invasive species in there, quite honestly. And the state, on their parkland, they do a lot of forestry work where they cut invasive species down, sell them to men and women who sell firewood. They auction. And then it gives an opportunity for, you know, the indigenous species to seed and grow accordingly. What I'm thinking here is that, you know, and to be quite honest, you know, this is the very first example of our forestry law being applied, okay? There were some mistakes that happened, but at the end of the day, I'm really appreciative of the law itself, and the mistake, it happened, but look how much is left. I mean, all of that could have been gone, all of the green under previous designs and...
I think the end result, if I'm understanding it, is because of the expertise and the planting of the types of plantings and how they're planted, you're gonna have a healthier environment than what was maybe there before, because there were trees that were being choked out. Like you said, they were tall. There was nothing, branches on the bottom. Whereas this seems to me maybe a good example of proper plantings.
And make it mitigation. So how many trees are you now bringing in?
So the total number of trees included on the... Oh, yeah, that's my...
And just quickly review some of the species, if you would, if you remember.
I can do that.
Sorry, I don't mean to throw that on.
So the total number of trees is 135 trees, and there's gonna be 87 shrubs.
Plus the wildflowers now in meadows.
Plus the meadow.
And hay and that sort of thing, yeah. And tall grass and wild.
So the deciduous trees that we... All the plants that we're using are native, New England native plants, including the wildflower meadow mix. We have acer, we have red maple. I won't do the Latin names. We have red maple. We have shad blow, I mentioned, hornbeam, dogwood, sweet gum, tulip tree, black gum, northern redwood. To mix some evergreens in, we have some fir and mostly cedar. The lower... Well, these are actually, these could be considered a tree or a shrub, but speckled alder, chokeberry is a shrub, button bush, summer sweep, some lower dogwood, father gilla, witch hazel, winter berry, spice bush and viburnum. We also added some gray dogwood. The original plan showed gray dogwood, I'm sorry. And more hornbeam, balsam fir, eastern white pine. And that pretty much runs the list. And the conservation mix from earned seeds is, it's a deer-resistant meadow mix, is what they call it, where... And we've used this before, and again, and they put it in here. Deer typically don't find it palatable. It doesn't mean they're not gonna ever eat it. If they're hungry enough, they'll eat just about anything. But what's good about this mix is it has a lot of cone flower, coriopsis, sunflower, milkweed, aster, all indigenous, but all very good, fairly easy to establish, but really, really prominent once they are established, types of perennials and flowering.
I think that's fantastic mitigation plan. Plus, you have the bad houses and...
We do. We don't show them on this plan, but we still have the bad houses and the bluebird houses located. There is a separate wet mix. It's also a meadow mix that will go into the detention basins, but it's similar to this mix. It's just something that is used to getting inundated during rain, so it just does better in the wet soils.
With those rainstorms, you know, I found it extremely interesting that the ponding did not occur. You know, just from the removal of the earth that you removed with the torrential rainstorms, you didn't get the flooding that we had had years past there in that hollow area, which is interesting. So, Dan, what are we... Any comments from any board members right now? Because I'm personally impressed, and I think, you know, forestry management is something that is incredibly specialized. And I had the pleasure of meeting state foresters and engineers over the new Gray Hollow East State Park that the town board approved also, in addition to this forestry law. And, you know, they go right in there and mark up all those invasive species and then... I mean, they're beautiful, the forests that they manage, you know, without all of the, you know, the vegetation that chokes everything out that shouldn't be there, you know? So this should work out really nicely.
And I agree with John, and also I commend you on your efforts to take the situation, it could be pretty ugly, and making it as best as it can be. Thank you for that.
So, are... Is there any other comments or...
I don't have any, and I know Rob's happy with this.
Okay.
He and I have talked about it.
How is this controlled so it's not mowed down in the later, at later dates? Like the meadow areas, how are they controlled so that's not mowed down by the new owners?
That was gonna be one of my comments, was how do we incorporate this into the plans? Make sure that this gets done. Because a lot of this work has to be done after some of the houses, but some of the drainage work, some of the driveways work, and there's areas where there's decompaction that has to be done as part of the SWIP and then planting after that. So it's gonna be an interesting way. We're gonna have to try to figure out. The onus is really on them to provide a phasing of some sort that we can be comfortable with and make sure that it happens.
So the stabilization is up to Jessica, right, at this point? That has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, the temporary stuff.
I believe what he's talking about is...
Gee, you're talking about the permanent. How do we ensure, right?
Well, he's talking about how to stop people from cutting down trees and mowing down the meadows to plant larger lawns, that sort of thing. Is there any legal basis for us to prevent a property owner from enlarging their lawn on their one acre of land or two acres of land?
You could impose deed restrictions in areas that can't be cleared on the lots.
Just the previous application, we imposed that you couldn't subdivide that lot. Not, it's not exactly the same thing. But if this is what everyone's gonna... But if this is what everyone's going to agree on, then it's got to be at some point codified into the deed that it cannot be changed. It's got to be protected. So that's what needs to be, in my mind, needs to be ensured that this doesn't get changed.
So if it needs to change after...
I think the previous application was subdivision and additional development. So what...
I'm just saying for the idea of imposing a restriction, that's all.
So...
Yeah, and so this applicant is planning on building these houses. That's a difference to some of the other applicants. So, you know, this applicant knows what this board wants.
Right.
I think, but, but we do, you know, if there, if there is a legal mechanism or anything that, that the applicant can propose to give the, the planning board some sense of security.
If you could elaborate, you're looking for deed restrictions to limit the disturbance of the trees and the meadows, right?
He wants to protect what the... If this is the mitigation plan to help restore what was removed and to help alleviate the strain, and you're, you're talking about all those local species or natural species that are part of the design, then I would hope that that would be protected forward so it's not removed at the, when the person moves in.
I just have to make a comment to the board about the fact that these, there's going to be an end user that is going to purchase this particular, all these lots. And you really cannot impose on the developer any conditions that will result, you know, that after their ownership.
I mean, what if somebody wanted to put a swimming pool in?
Yeah. Or shed or playset or whatever.
I don't think we have.
The developer will adhere to this and code enforcement will ensure that the developer adheres to it. But if the property owner wants to put a swimming pool in or a basketball court or tennis court or whatever, that's their right on their property. So there are no laws to prevent that.
Right.
It's not always a good idea.
I don't know if it is helpful for this board, but if there's something in the filed map and the plan that the building department would not grant COs until the plantings are in. So, so based on what you're saying as, as town attorney, yeah, we, we won't be able to control future end users.
Right.
But whatever we're agreeing to here, I think it's, well, we have title, it's one where we will get everything in. And if we don't have it in, then we're okay if the building department says we can't sign off and grant a CO because this needs to go in. So oftentimes, we're going to be doing some of the final grading work and the plantings prior to closing. So it's, it's on the latter end, but it's something that we know we're going to have to do. And if we can't get COs, we can't close. If we can't close, then we don't get paid and then, yeah. So it's, if that helps, that's something that we could put a mechanism in like that.
Sounds fine. Thank you. Can I just make one more comment?
Yeah. All right. I know that there may have been like conversations with Rob O'Payne, who's not present here today. Anything that was discussed between the last meeting and this meeting cannot be factored into your, you know, any of your decisions that you make.
Right.
But I note that I know that Rob O'Payne made an extensive record at the last meeting and his opinions are, you know, in the record.
Yes. All right. Yep.
You take a comment from the...
No, no, we're not, we're not. There's no public hearing tonight.
This is disgusting.
No, we're not, we're not having a discussion with the public. There's no, there's no, there's no... Mr. Crane, you know the rules, all right? This is not, if you, Mr. Crane, if you'd like to, if you'd like, Mr. Crane, if you'd like, Mr. Crane, if you'd like to go outside and protest, you can, but not here today and now, there's no public hearing, okay? That's all there is to it. Thank you. So with that being said, are there any decisions that we need to make?
Well, I think, you know, it seems that the board is generally satisfied, if I'm picking up from the vibe here.
Yes.
You know, my biggest concern obviously was the phasing, you know, and, and making sure that this is incorporated in. So, you know, I think some prominent notes about all this needing to be done as part of a condition of a CO, CFO. It could be, it could be something that has to be bonded and an inspection fee put in there as well. Maybe we require survey at the end for each lot before the CFO. I just, I just think that there's, there's ways to make sure that, you know, to satisfy, you know, Jason and the, the other members that are concerned with future, and if the homeowner decides to do something with it, I mean, I'm hoping that when they see it, they're going to appreciate it. You know, it's a beautiful plan, you know? And...
Points made about future development, I get that. It's just, I guess the concern is, is mitigating what's been done to ensure that it's going to get, just it's part that gets done right.
You can, you can ask the applicant if, as to their reasoning for, you know, the plantings before issuance of a CL as opposed to issuance of a billing permit. And I think that should be requested and answered right now on the record.
Okay. Could you repeat that one more time?
So the applicant is going to be doing some plantings and the question would be whether or not, you know, it should be done before Jessica Peterson issues a building permit or CL.
I think it, as it was explained to me, it would have to be CO because there'd be grading and other things that'll affect the ability to plant.
Yeah.
So that would have to be the condition for a CL, that the meadows are in and the proper plantings are planted.
That's perfectly agreeable with me.
All right. If the applicant wants to just expound on that, that, that would complete the record.
Yeah. And so then, anywhere where we're doing grading, like...
Here, this is area that we could plant and just be done. And same thing with the, or drainage, yeah, there's plantings along here. That, that, anything where we're not going to be disturbing that area more, then we can get those plants in and get those, start to be stabilized. But other areas like up here or different areas with the meadow mix, when we're doing grading, when we're doing work, those areas are going to get trampled on. And so then that's, that's why some of those, it would be, it wouldn't be genuine to say, oh, we'll do it, we'll get it in and then just rip it all apart. So any, yeah, anything that we can get in where we get, we won't be affected by construction of homes, but that's where some of it would be upfront, prior to even starting construction and then some of it by, by having that CO and, and needing, you know, carrot and stick. So then that carrot, we, we were looking for the CO and then we would perform. So, yeah. That's the rationale.
In my opinion, I mean, you want to do all of the drainage work early.
Yep.
So you can incorporate phasing into your plan that has all the drainage work and then the meadows and trees and shrubs in those areas.
Sure.
Done, maybe even before any of the houses are built. And then that way, you know, if you're, if you're marketing a lot, you know, they already see that, it's there already as part of the lot. And then, you know, then there's also, you tell them, we have some things that we have to put on here as per planning board authorization for this lot to be created. And, you know, I guess if they don't like it, they don't like it. They don't, you don't have them as a purchaser, but...
But, yeah, we would do drainage first thing. And, and, yeah, that's how we go about it.
So be thoughtful on a, on a phasing plan that the board can support and that can be enforced and, and will, will lead to long-term success of this plan.
Okay. So just moving, moving forward, you know, taking steps back on track, I would expect that we would submit for the next meeting and could we get back to where we were before this all began and before the mitigation plan was needed? That would be for conditional final approval.
I don't have a problem with that.
No.
Yeah. I mean, you've really, I, I think the mitigation plan is beautiful. Yeah.
It's in place.
Yeah.
Yes.
And beyond that, what has happened now with stabilization? Has, have you, has the stop work order been lifted yet?
No, I haven't heard anything.
You haven't heard anything?
No, no update on that yet.
Okay. Well, that has nothing to do with this board or the town board. That lies squarely with the building department. So why don't you reach out to them? Because we've done everything we could to communicate that to them through our recommendation last. And I think, Dan, you've sent an email.
I did.
Right? For the silt fencing and whatever else needs to be done there.
Okay.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
So appreciate it. Yeah. You have a great night.
Take care.
Do we have those words?
Yes.
Yeah, right. I was going to put them in the basement.
I was also going to ask if you can just make sure that the, the board has electronic copies of all these things that were presented.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Have a good night. Town Center Grove.
Okay. Okay. Brian Watts here from Dais de Coza here on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, Brian.
How's everyone this evening?
Good, good. How are you?
I'm here.
You are, right. Exactly. It's a blessing every day.
So we're here respectfully seeking an extension of approval. We had a couple outstanding issues, border health and some utility easements. We're actually done with the border health, that's completed. And the last thing we're working on is a, our office is finalizing utility easements and we just need a little bit more time to get that through. That's the last item.
Yeah. Dan or Greg, Craig, anybody have any?
Yeah, so they received preliminary subdivision and site plan approval on October 17th of 2024.
Yeah.
There was a previous extension granted at the April meeting, which was to July 21st of 2025.
Today.
And they were seeking additional 90 days that would put them through October 19th of 2025.
Okay.
And our meeting in October is the 16th, so it would just be just past that meeting date. So that would seem appropriate. I'm sorry, did I, did I miss it? Did, what's the status with outside agencies at this point?
Border Health is complete and we're just trying to finalize, finalize the utility easement along the front of the property. That's still bomb hardcore, but we're trying to get it off the...
Whatever happened with that deed restriction?
That was Brian DeCoza.
That was the other lot.
Oh, okay.
That was Town Center Square.
Oh, not Grove. There you go.
Right?
There's, there's a lot of town centers going on here in this office. Okay. That was one right next door.
It was next door.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Prove the 90-day?
To extend this applicant for 90 days until October 19th, 2025.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Brian, can you, the, the code requires that outside agencies correspondence with them is provided to the board. Can you send us some of those for the, for the planning board file?
Thank you. I already got the date on there, yeah. That's the right date.
That's the right date, okay.
Yeah.
I think that, that's it for me?
Yep.
It was too short, Brian.
I'll, I'll be more difficult the next time, I'm sure.
You're so pleasant. Appreciate working with you.
Empty house you now.
Best is last.
All right.
Take care.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate your time.
So we're not at the very last, all right? We have Grape Hollow East, all right? So Grape Hollow East, this is their, literally their 11th...
Oh, my God.
...extension request. Actually, I think this is 12th. This is 12th.
Since 2022.
And there's, you know, for me, a lot has happened here. This goes way back, a lot of issues, all right, with the existence of wetlands and bulk requirements and different things here and there. And quite honestly, I think we're establishing a really bad precedent if we extend this again. Because I can't even remember the application, I can't remember the project, and wetland laws have changed since the first of the year.
Do they fall under the New York DEC?
My recollection was it was a DEC wetland across the street.
Right. I mean, the water, New York waters, New York City water.
Yeah, it's, it's in the DEP watershed, yeah.
That's a, that's a big issue.
And what was up on the slope there, Dan, if I remember correctly, anything or am I...
There was a lot of steep slopes and, you know, the board worked with them to get to a point and just stalled.
Yeah.
So what is the norm for something that's been dragging this long?
Well, they're in technical...
Default.
Default right now because the extension, the extension was until June 26.
Yeah.
But, so you're not, you are not obligated to grant every extension request, so especially where there is a demonstrable like record like this one. And if you're going to go that route, Mr. Chairman, I suggest that you read the April 3rd, 2025 resolution into the record and then supplement it with what has happened since then. Because I know Dan had some comments that there were submissions in May.
I guess, I think that resolution was, is it the March 20th, 2025?
What date, what email is that in, Dan?
Oh, yeah. It was an April 3rd email.
April 3rd?
But...
Oh, that might have been the one that was signed.
For the April 17th, no, that was for the April 17th meeting.
Well, I just want to get the other, the other board members.
They were asked to come to the April 17th meeting.
If you have any...
They were granted the extension, but then they were asked to appear at the April 17th meeting.
What was the reason for the extension at that time? Do we know?
All over the place, you know, ambiguity.
I don't remember.
The, the, this resolution I'm referring to, even though it may not have been adopted, was a, a summary of every extension you've given them. And I think that should be placed on the record if you're gonna, if you were thinking about not extending.
So, all right, allow me to, should I read it first?
Yeah, then you, then the board can discuss.
I think that's...
So Rob, Rob signed it because I think it was a meeting that you weren't at, the March meeting.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
So, so is this, is this the, it's...
March 20th, 2025 was the last resolution date.
Is that...
Of extension.
If you could verify.
Oh, I don't know what I just did.
Technology challenge.
I tried to, I tried to zoom in and it went away.
Might have been one of my, my wife's pole dancing videos. You got scared, didn't you?
I can just give you my computer. I have it pulled up on here.
Make anybody sweat.
Yeah, I know.
Right?
I do the one foot, that's it. On ground. Have you ever seen her?
Oh, she's a, she's an angel. I don't deserve her. All right. So, okay, Grape Hollow East subdivision dated March 20th, 2025. This resolution issued pursuant to 276 and 277 of New York State Town Law and the Town of Beekman Zoning Ordinance and Land Subdivision Regulation, whereas the project sponsor, John D. Derso, has been granted preliminary subdivision plat approval and conditional final subdivision plat approval on the January 20th, 2nd by the Town of Beekman Planning Board. And whereas the New York State... And whereas the New York State Town Law dictates that conditional subdivision approval is valid for 180 days after the granting of the resolution, the resolution of such approval or July 19th, 2022. And whereas November 17th, 2022, meeting, the applicant secured three 90-day extensions of conditional subplat approval through April 15th, 2023 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the May 18th, 2023 meeting, the applicant secured one additional 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through July 14th, 2023 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the July 20th, 2023 meeting, the applicant secured one additional 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through October 12th, 2023 by planning board resolution. And whereas the October 19th, 2023 meeting, the applicant secured one additional 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through January 10th, 2024 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the January 18th, 2024 meeting, the applicant secured one 36-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through February 15th, 2024 by planning board resolution and was directed to appear before the planning board at its February 15th, 2024 meeting to discuss the status of satisfying the remaining conditions of subdivision plat approval. And whereas the applicant appeared before the planning board at the February 15th, 2024 meeting, provided an update on the status of satisfying the remaining conditions of subdivision plat approval and secured one additional 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through May 15th, 2024 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the May 16th, 2024 meeting, the applicant secured one additional 90-day resolution extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through August 13th, 2024 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the August 15th, 2024 meeting, the applicant secured one additional 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through November 11th, 2024 by planning board resolution. And whereas at the October 17th, 2024 meeting, the applicant secured one 30-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through December 11th, 2024 by planning board resolution and was directed to appear before the planning board at the November 24th, 21st, 2024 meeting to discuss the statute of satisfying the remaining conditions of subdivision plat approval. And whereas the applicant appeared before the planning board at the November 21st, 2024 meeting and provided an update on the status of satisfying the remaining conditions of subdivision plat approval and securing one additional 99-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through March 20th, 2025 by planning board extension.
Want me to dip over?
I need a drink. Whereas the applicant has requested more time to satisfy the engineering and legal aspects of the conditional final subdivision approval. And whereas the planning board has determined that there has been no change in circumstance that would require a reapproval of a subdivision plat. And whereas the planning board further determined that there have been noticed changes in circumstances warranting reopening of seeker and that the negative declaration shall remain in full force and affect to cover the extension. And whereas the planning board continued to express concern that the applicant has taken extensive amount of time to satisfy the conditions of the subdivision plat approval. And therefore, be it resolved, the planning board resolves to grant one 90-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through June 22nd, 2025.
June 26th. June 26th.
What did, okay. June 26th, 2025. And be it further resolved that the applicant is directed to appear at the April 17th, 2025 meeting of the planning board and provide an updated status of satisfying the condition. And be it further resolved that all conditions of the 20, January 20, 2022 resolution shall be fulfilled prior to the signing of the plan by the chairman of the planning board. Signed by Robert Lopain, April 3rd, 2025. I was absent. Peter Poltrak, aye. Robert Lopain, aye. Fay Grito, absent. Jason Etten Tuan, aye.
All right. Before you deliberate and discuss.
Yes.
Um, Dan's gonna update you.
Okay.
As to what has happened since April.
Yeah, so at that April meeting, the engineer had requested a meeting with my office. And that did occur at the end of April. Resulted in us also, you know, creating a new review letter as a result of that discussion, which went out in May. So, um, we haven't heard anything since.
Right.
Do you need the questions? The review, the review letter, Dan, um, just readdressed.
It was a reiteration of a lot of the things that were still out there before.
It was, that was still outstanding.
Is there a lot outstanding?
Um, the other question is, what did they actually accomplish? Cause it doesn't sound like much.
You have a May 13th.
The extension.
Yeah, May 13th was the last one.
They did satisfy certain comments. Page two.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, and one of the, one of the things that was part of some of the new comments that came out of that meeting was that, you know, by now there was a new speedies general permit for score motor discharges associated with constructing, construction activity. So their SWPs had to be updated for that. But there, there's, there's a number of comments out there. And I, from all accounts, Eric from my office met with them and sounded like they understood what our comments were. So we're just, we're waiting on the responses.
But it's, but it's been ongoing.
We haven't heard from them since the meeting we had.
Okay. Haven't heard from them since the meeting. But also, this has been occurring, the extensions have been occurring for two years.
Well, this started in 2019, this project.
So, you know, it's been going on for several years. And.
True.
The, um, kid, the conditions of approval that have not been met have just been rolling forward. Am I correct from you, from extension to extension to extension?
A number of them have, yeah.
And also there's new wetland laws that have been passed that I don't know how they impact this project or not.
Um, I think, I don't know. They were given conditional based upon the 2022 regulations.
So it's.
But they haven't started any construction.
I, I believe because of the seeker, there was a seeker determination. I believe that they'd be waived.
They're grandfathered.
Yeah.
So you can, you, if you do go down the route that you're, you're considering, they would have to come before this board and seek new approvals on updated regs.
Right.
Which would seem appropriate.
We have to look.
I mean, you know, the applications expired.
Technically.
Technically.
Yeah.
Um, there are new regulations and there hasn't been cooperation. I don't like establishing precedents like this. Craig, unless you feel that there's.
No, listen, you laid out.
A regular reason.
If, if you feel.
This is my opinion. I, the board can vote however they choose, but.
I mean, you, you gave, when the applicant was here, the last meeting, you gave them a return date.
Yeah.
The next meeting and they, you know, they had an opportunity to be heard in, uh, at tonight's meeting.
Any comments or questions? Anybody have anything to add one way or the other?
So Dan, in the past, when we've done this, you know, you've weighed in on whether or not they were making good progress or making some progress towards the needs to the end here. In your opinion, has there been any substantial progress? We sent that letter a little over two months ago. We haven't heard anything and I, I would've expected to have heard something. Okay. So.
And over, and here again, over the, going back, but tied in with what Jason is saying, over the years, there has not been substantial progress. Is that correct?
There was some progress, but substantial, I, I don't know. I guess it's subjective, but.
So I guess the standard you have to, the standard you have to, um, consider is whether satisfactory, there's been a demonstration of satisfactory progress in meeting those conditions.
Well, there's one other item.
So the applicant, over the years, has not shown substantial progress.
Let me, let me add another point. No, he has not.
All right, well, that, what you have to do is you've got to make some fine points. And I think that's where Craig said, uh, partially is that we've got to, if we're gonna do this, we've got to make bullets, if you will, to substantiate why we are not granting the extension.
Well, first of all, it's expired. So.
Okay, well, that's one, that's, that's.
That's number one.
That's number one.
So number, number two is forestry law was passed last year, I believe. Right? Uh, you know, and here we are talking about subdivisions and, and problems on subdivisions. Uh, if we don't have him come back before us, then none of those forestry laws regarding tree removal around principal structures and other ancillary structures are working. So.
But the thing is, is he was here in April, whenever it was this year.
He would have to start all over.
And he has not.
Not completely, but not address, I mean, he would need to address at least some of the new laws that have been put in place if they apply.
Would he be grandfathered Craig or not?
Uh, he would, he would be subject to the original resolution, the conditions of the original resolution.
So the new laws that are in place and everything would technically not affect him at this point?
Correct.
So what, what's the point?
But he has.
What's the point of then not granting the extension?
I just want to add one thing. Our code, it does address extensions. And, um, the, the code says that 138, I forgot the code section, but it says that the board can grant up to two 90-day extensions. And the board is being asked to consider a 12th.
I'll make it easy. For me, I'm, I'm, I'm enough. At this point, I haven't seen enough progress. I haven't seen enough movement. It seems almost apathetic. And we would be rewarding bad behavior, setting a precedence.
I agree.
And at the very bare minimum, we would be allowing them to skirt new regulations, which I don't feel is appropriate. So it's gonna be a no for me.
We have to, we would have to just look at everything. So I just had a curiosity. So Jason's question was, and, and you confirmed it. So he would, what, what would we be able to review again if we denied the extension? And he had to repropose the project, which I would like to see. I, I haven't seen it in a very, very long time. And so other than me just looking at what he's already prepared and the resolutions that were already signed, what would be within our scope of ability to discuss with him?
Well, if you grant the further extension.
No, if we don't.
If you don't, it's over. You, you're revoking basically the conditional subdivision.
Oh, okay.
From 2022.
So we can read, okay. So that, that.
So he has to start all over.
Well, he has to bring in everything that's already prepared and then address new issues.
He has to start all over.
You'd have to be tweaked to the newer regulations.
Yeah. Right. All right. So, uh, any other questions?
The, the question you asked the engineer really has to be decided by you.
Right.
He can only give you the facts.
Understood.
And, and in that, um, resolution from 2022, there was a direction to comply.
Right.
The, the engineer's letter.
Right.
I forgot the date of it.
I remember.
But it had all the conditions laid out.
Clearly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So if we state that the, uh, conditions of the letter of 2022 have not, the engineer's letter have not been addressed and met today.
It's already been done.
That substantial substantiation for the.
Yeah, he's already violated.
Yeah, you, you, you should put that on the record as one of the.
You have to put it on the record because you've got to cover, cover your CYA.
What is that's new?